Okay, I'll call this meeting to order and we'll acknowledge in this fact that we're moving from Wurukhuput to Musulat territory. Motion of Ruby, gentlemen?
Set the agenda May 2nd, 2023, regular meeting of council be adopted as presented. Second, Northcut.
All those in favor?
Allen, Northcut.
Elliot.
Joseph.
Davis. Okay, Minnesota regular council meeting held on April 18th, 2023.
Get the public input.
Oh, what? No, it didn't.
Yeah, you did. Sorry.
No, what?
Yep.
What, right here? E.
Oh. It's not on here. Okay. Sorry, public input. Uh, we got it. Anybody signed on? Did anybody sign on?
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, so the media did like. Okay. Two questions here, I thought, directed for you, Mayor Davis. When I reviewed the recent mail out of, your recent mail out, it included information concerning the Strategic Economic Development Plan, which I believe was the subject of a council meeting closed to the public. Isn't this public disclosure a violation of the community charter, section 117, the same municipal regulation that was referenced by this council to censor councillor Elliot? If this is correct, why is it that council has selectively applied rules only to be applied and enforced against councillor Elliot, not you, Mayor Davis? Second question, in your mailing, your previous mailing for the village, you stated to encourage residents to base their judgment of the village's financial condition on the facts, and then only reference audited financial statements that are necessarily missing a comprehensive, precise, detailed record of the facts. Not providing such a necessary breakdown has the appearance of hiding and disguising the financial data of where the village accumulated from homeownership taxes was actually channeled. Is it intentional of the village to attempt hiding this information, even in a freedom of information request? And if so, why? My last question here, I've been coming to these council meetings for months and asking precise questions, like I'm doing today. They've not been answered, not any of them. You may have promised to look into and answer them, including response to questions and let us center council. Why have you refused to answer the questions and not done as you promised on a public platform to look into and answer them?
Okay, thanks for that.
Thanks for that, this is the problem. That's as far as it has ever gone.
Do you have a question for this, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, go ahead.
Was the Strategic Economic Development Plan part of a closed meeting? Has that been released to the public?
It's in process right now.
So that was announced by you before it actually was.
You couldn't have pretended that you realized. Yeah, it was definitely open to elected members of council.
Okay.
Eventually we'll have a plan, and then it will come out.
Can we sign off on what you said, Matt, please?
We already have our strategic plan that was drawn up, so it's reflected in that.
So the council did pass it to be released to the public?
Strategic priorities.
It's on the website.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now we're fleshing it out by working on the economic development plan in conjunction with Wurukhuput, Musulat, First Nation, because we decided to work in partnership with them to do economic development for our region. I mean, we only have jurisdiction over our municipality, but we are still working in partnership with.
So council's free to discuss basically the content of that closed meeting now?
No.
So, not right now, this is public input.
No, I mean, on our day to day.
Well, again, it's in process, it's, there's no document that's been released yet. We're working on a document, it's somewhere council records.
Okay, no, just trying to clarify that, thank you.
Okay.
Minus.
Sure, go ahead with the minus.
Move that regular council meeting minutes, April 18th, 2023, be adopted as presented. Second, Northcut.
Um, I have one comment on it, probably not a big deal, but on DOT 191 plus 2023, there's some no votes attributed to councillor Elliot, and one of them just shows as a no vote, but there's no attribution to it.
At the top of page seven.
Oh, sorry, just to clarify that, I was just.
Just for the record.
Yeah.
So that was the only thing that I could, can interactify. Anything else? Okay.
I can't find anything that I could improve upon.
That was the only thing I saw. Um, so, uh.
Need a vote on that?
Yeah, on the motion, uh.
So, as amended.
As amended.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Allen, Northcut.
I abstain.
Abstain?
Justice. Uh, we discovered at councillor's school that you cannot abstain, an abstention is a yes vote.
Correct.
Oh.
There's no abstentions.
Thanks for that.
The council's procedure violates.
Who's, oh, Mr. CEO, could you explain that to me?
And our council procedure violates, has a yes or no.
Oh, I see, okay. Uh, yes then. Okay. Okay, now, Paulson.
Did we get councillor Joseph?
Yes, we did, yeah. She's in favor. So the committee of the whole meeting held on April 24th, 2023.
Uh, can I just, um, the only thing, and it's a little thing, but I don't know if it's, if it's a relevant thing, it says I attended by video, but I did attend by telephone, so I don't know if it's.
Okay. But accurately. Okay.
Move that committee of the whole meeting minutes, April 24th, be adopted as presented. Second, Northcut.
All those in favor?
Allen, Northcut.
I didn't attend that meeting, so I don't think I should vote on that.
Why?
Councillor Joseph?
I'm in the same vote as councillor Elliot, I was not in attendance at that meeting, so I don't want to vote, or it'll be a no.
Okay, um, I'm in favor. So, uh. Report to council. Now, our last council report, we're past, so I'm just taking a taste of one short piece here, added it to my new report because it's important. We received a $1.8 million grant for the fire hall relocation project. This grant from the Canada Community Building Fund is administered by the Union of B.C. Municipalities. I'm happy to see that we will finally be able to get our fire department a new home at the least cost to Tassus taxpayers. This has been a long time coming, it is important to have a fully functional fire department to meet its obligations. Since our last council meeting, I've attended meetings of the regional district board and the First Nations Relations Committee there, as well as the Comox-Stratcona Regional Health Board. More Tassus specific, we have had meetings with staff from both Stratcona and Comox Valley Regional Districts dealing with the Connected Coast Project and solid waste management issues. We've also met to receive and consider our first iteration of the Economic Development Initiative. Apart from that, I just wanted to acknowledge the passing of Gordon Whitefoot. He was very much the voice of Canada for a generation and his music will always live on. I feel lucky to have seen him perform live once at the 1982 Stein Valley Festival. That's my report. Councilor Allen. Or, actually, councillor Joseph, do you have a report, councillor Joseph?
I have no report this evening.
Okay. Councillor Allen.
Um, I'm gonna read an email I sent eight hours ago. Uh, attaches my written report outlining the 30-plus meetings I've taken through the last meeting. I've also brought with me some information for your review from my double-barrel business trip to Nanamo for AVICC and Victoria for UBCM respectively. Also worth noting, the spring desire is scheduled for May 13th, and we need folks to, who want to be exhibitors, to sign up for tables by Friday. Lastly, the Tassus Fires Club submitted its 10th order today, which was 13 boxes for $225. Since restarting this initiative in December, we have brought in 164 good food boxes for residents in our village, to the total of $3,040. Approximately 23 have been sponsored, as we have many generous people in our community. Thanks for those who donate their time and talent to Food Security in Action. Submitted respectfully. Councillor Allen.
Okay, thanks for that. Back to Rick, H, councillor Northcut.
No report tonight.
Oh, councillor Elliot.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to take this opportunity to apologize to the CAO for my prior conduct. I councillor Doug Elliott would like to, without reservation, retract any comments I made about Mr. Tassell on a professional and personal level. My comments about Mr. Tassell are not true. Mr. Tassell is a highly educated person with a Bachelor of Arts degree with honors from the University of Victoria, a master's degree from the Colorado State University, and a skilled chief administration officer. Prior to Mr. Tassell's appointment as the CAO for the village of Tassus, Mr. Tassell had a distinguished career, including the following positions. From 2013 to 2015, Mr. Tassell was the Deputy Auditor General for the local government, Office of the Auditor General for local government. From 2010 to 2013, Mr. Tassell was an Executive Director, Strategic Information Management, Minister of Labor, Citizen Service, and Open Government. From 2009 to 2010, Mr. Tassell was an Executive Director, Police Service Division, Ministry of Public Safety and Solicitor General. From 2006 to 2009, Mr. Tassell was an Executive Director, Strategic Justice Partnerships, Ministry of Public Safety and Solicitor General. From 2002 to 2006, Mr. Tassell was the Deputy General Auditor Liquid Control, or Liquor Control and Licensing Branch, Ministry of Public Safety and Solicitor General. And from 1988 to 2002, Mr. Tassell was the Deputy Director of Police Services Division, Ministry of Public Safety and Solicitor General. From 1994 to 1998, Mr. Tassell was the Regional Manager, Employment Standards Branch. Mr. Tassell has provided me, as one member of the council, all the budget information which I was entitled. I erred in messaging within my January 24th, 2023 letter, and at other times, that the village's institutedness, to the contrary, the village is in a surplus position. I also erred in messaging how whether and if bylaw enforcement occurs, and that is the CAO of the village, not the council, that decides whether and when the village's bylaws are enforced and in what manner. Mr. Tassell, my deepest apologies for my unprofessional conduct. I let emotion interfere with my better judgment, and I crossed over the line. My inexperience in parliamentary procedures led to this violation of the code of conduct, and I hope that you will forgive me, and I wish you success in your continued efforts to serve the village. And I councillor Doug Elliott agree not to be disrespectful towards Mr. Tassell and the public during council meetings or in any further correspondence. And I councillor Doug Elliott also agree to cease and desist from any slanderous, libelous, or dislaminatory comments of and concerning Mr. Tassell in any form and indefinitely. On a separate issue, looking back on this experience, I realize that my mailouts should have been focused on providing information that fueled debate on the issues of this village, rather than criticizing individuals in this administration. There is no structure in place for opposition that exists in local government, unlike our provincial and federal levels. Due to my inexperience, I tried desperately to slow down the process of deficit spending in the hopes to promote discussion on the consequences of taking on debt at a time when interest rates are rising. I campaigned on streamlining the overhead of the administration to increase the resources of the Public Works Department and to promote economic development of the former mill site. I realize that my visions are not the same as the council that you've elected. This has created tensions and divided us. I have reached out to the provincial government for assistance, mediation, and interventions. The response has been disappointing at best. And I've come to the conclusion that the provincial government does not enforce the community charter whatsoever. Our system is designed for the rich, it is up to the wealthy to hold elected officials accountable, and have the courts determine their political fate. This is rather a disturbing aspect of our dysmocracy, and hopefully there will be changes in the future. I did not seek political office to engage in legal disputes that are not in the best interest for this council or the community. After a soul-searching discussion with my wife, we both felt that it is not in our best interest to continue my role as the councillor of this village. We moved here because of the spectacular surroundings, the friendly neighbors, and the economic potential. Regardless of what direction the village moves towards, I will not, it will not have an impact on our happiness. We have a wonderful group of friends, we enjoy our interactions, interactions with the local business community, and will continue to explore our spectacular coastline. I wish to take this time to extend my deepest appreciation to my supporters. It has been a wonderful experience working with you, and it has been very inspiring to see so many individuals that are committed to the well-being of our community. However, in the interest of my own well-being, I wish to announce my resignation effective September 18th, 2023. Councillor Doug Elliott, so to Tassus.
Thanks for that. Appreciate it. Um, can we, uh, that's all.
Mark, are we good?
Well, we can talk afterwards.
But I just want to let you know that there's no harsh feelings, and I want to just apologize for my behavior in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move that council reports be received, second, Northcut.
Uh, discussion? There are none? All those in favor?
Allen, Northcut.
Elliot.
Joseph.
Davis. Okay. Um, 2023 to 2027 Financial Plan Bylaw Number 656 of 2023, adoption.
Move that 2023 to 2027 Financial Plan Bylaw Number 656, 2023, be reconsidered, finally passed and adopted the second day of May 2023. Second, Northcut.
All those in favor?
Allen, Northcut.
I'll abstain from this vote.
Joseph, yes?
You vote in the affirmative when you say abstain. So you can go yes or no.
Um, pass this to councillor Allen, please.
Um, so this isn't a board meeting, I'm sorry, but when we were at councillor's school back in February, abstention was actually specifically brought up, and we were told that, that we cannot abstain, it is not an option, it's either a yes or a no vote.
Oh, I see, okay. Yes.
Okay, thanks for that unanimous. 2023 Tax Rate Bylaw Number 657 of 2023, adoption.
Move that Tax Rate Bylaw Number 657, 2023, be received for consideration. Second, Northcut.
All those in favor?
Allen, Northcut.
Joseph.
Okay, Davis. unanimous, next motion.
Move that Tax Rate Bylaw Number 657, 2023, be reconsidered, finally passed and adopted this the second day of May 2023. Second, Northcut.
All those in favor?
Allen, Northcut.
Elliot.
Joseph.
Davis. Thank you. Okay, uh, directly into correspondence. Uh, motion received, all for, for anonymous?
Move that these correspondence, let them be received, second, Northcut.
All those in favor?
Allen, Northcut.
Elliot.
Joseph.
Davis. Thank you. Okay, uh, directly into correspondence. Uh, motion received, all for, for anonymous?
Move that these correspondence, let them be received, second, Northcut.
All those in favor?
Allen, Northcut.
Elliot.
Joseph.
Davis. Okay, and who would like to pull what for discussion?
I'd like to call L1, and I'll talk to L2, so, I move that items 1 and 2 be pulled.
Is that, is that it?
Anybody else want number 3?
Okay, motion to pull this to.
Move that items 1 and 2 be pulled for discussion. Second, Northcut.
All those in favor?
Allen, Northcut.
Joseph.
Davis. Okay, uh, who would like to lead off the discussion on B.C. Recreation and Parks Association regarding designation of the month as Human and Recreation and Parks Month in support of a prescription for nature?
I, I pulled it, so I, I guess I'll do it insofar as I can. Um, it looks like a, an ask that is not particularly onerous on the village, and given that we sort of are marketing ourselves as sort of nature and parks and whatnot, I think that this is a, a fit for us.
Yeah. Yeah, we certainly are, so, uh, I'm just trying to find it, what, what's their ask on here?
Uh, to, uh, that B.C. Recreation and Parks Association hereby proclaim that June is Recreation and Parks Month in support of, um, a prescription for nature.
Okay, are you reading that as a motion?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay, you have a second, Miss.
Is that enough of a motion mark, or do you want something prettier?
It's long, we can read the whole there for a pause, but there's definitely a lot here.
What's the whereas of?
Mm-hmm. Which aren't the important parts.
Maybe just that, that village of Tassus proclaims June as Recreation and Parks Month in support of P.A.R.X., a prescription for nature.
Okay.
Probably do it.
All right, so, uh, move that Tassus to, uh, designate June as Recreation and Parks Month in support of P.A.R.X., a prescription for nature.
I'll take that one.
Okay, uh, discussion on motion. I, I guess my thing with any of these, these sort of declarations is, is there something we want to do about it, or we just proclaiming it, or do we want some sort of activity, or some media release, or anything like that?
Um, I, I think that at the, at least, we could probably, whatever marketing we've got going on with our social media, that, that that would be whoever's handling our social media, that we've got, we've got, what is experienced Tassus or whatever.
I think she's done now.
Yeah.
But there's still somebody handling that page, is there not? Hmm. We'll just have to communicate it ourselves.
Okay.
We are now nature prescription friendly.
Do it through Facebook, I got, but do we want to put something on the village website in the right direction? Figure out.
I think that, uh, that's appropriate if it's available, I know that folks' website persons on vacation. Well, it's not June yet either. Okay, so we got a little time.
Yeah, a few weeks to get something on there. Okay.
This whereas clause, the second, third from last, inspire environmental stewardship, it really kind of dovetails into the next thing, which is the salmon.
Okay, I'll go over that.
Well, I, I just feel like, we're already doing this, just passing this motion is icing on some cake.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, anybody want to say further regarding that? Okay, uh, moving right along.
We have to vote it.
On what?
On therefore the village of Tassus make June.
Yeah, my motion, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
And, yeah.
Okay, you're right, we didn't, okay, uh, we do, did we get a second on it?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Allen, Northcut.
Elliot.
Davis.
Joseph.
Okay.
So as it goes into the next one, number two, um, I'm unable to attend this next community workshop, i- it's in Port Hardy, um, I want everyone to know about it because we already, by participating on the watershed board, we're, we have our own volunteer hatchery here, we have an economy that is largely fishing tourism, and so this is, um, something that is for your information, um, and, apparently, you know, we're really a lot of fun, and maybe I'll be able to go to it next year, it says, celebrating the salmoned enhancement program for 46 years. All I need to say about it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, uh, moving on to, uh, M1. Director Finance, regarding presentation of the draft 2022 Goja Tassus financial statements and audit findings report for the year ending 2022. Uh, motion received?
Move that this presentation and documents be received. Second, Northcut.
Okay, all those in favor?
Allen, Northcut.
I don't know anything about it, so I will say.
It's just on receiving the report.
Oh, really? I'm ready to give to us now? Sounds good.
Yeah.
Joseph. Joseph, yes.
And I believe we have a dear member here on, online, our CFO?
Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor and council, how are you guys? Um, I'll, I'd like to start off tonight, slightly out of order, I guess, but start out with the audit findings report. Um, so this report was prepared by our auditors, Chan, Noah Sadboats, chartered professional accountants. They completed our audit of our financial statements, and in their opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the village as at December 31, 2022. During their audit, they did not note any control deficiencies, and they did not make any adjustments. Um, this presentation also includes the draft auditor's report as well as the management representation letter. Okay, now I will move on to the financial statements. Um, I'd like to note, so these are audited, of course, by our, by our auditors, um, they are prepared using Canadian public sector accounting, and they are dated December 31st, Starting on page four, we're going to start with the statement of financial position, um, and for some folks, it's the balance sheet. Um, so if we start there, our total financial assets for, um, 2022 is $2,893,034. That is a slight decrease from prior year. So this balance is made up of $375,000 in cash, as well as 100, or sorry, excuse me, $1,976,570 in portfolio investments. Um, the portfolio investments, you can look at the details in note two, but they are made up of short-term and immediate bonds, as well as money market funds. Our total liabilities for the year 2022 is $1,032,751. This is also a decrease from the prior year. It's partly made up of. It's partly made up of, um, $790,269 in deferred revenue. These are funds that we have, that the village has received but are set aside for a specific purpose and are made up as of items such as the gas tax and the Community Unity Trail Grant. Our TCA, or sorry, our tangible capital assets have increased this year to $9,641,000. Um, the additions this year are due to various capital projects such as the flood mitigation project, community pier and dock, the fire hall relocation, wastewater, and some other capital projects. Uh, the bottom line here is an accumulated surplus of $11,565,000. Again, um, details of this surplus can be found in Note 11. This balance is partly made up of unrestricted funds totaling $983,819 and reserve funds of $876,464. Uh, details, again, yeah, can be found in Note 11, which is page 13. So these reserve funds are made up of Capital Works Machine and Equipment Reserve, Fire Hall Reserve of $280,331. Recreation and Capital Works, $168,597, as well as the Economic Development Reserve of $33,968. So again, the total of our reserve funds is $876,464. Um, further, if you'd like further information about the reserve funds, you can see details of the additions to the funds in Schedule 4 as well. Um, moving on to the statement of operations, um, which is also known as the income statement. Um, we have total revenue of $2,839,808 compared to a budget of $2,186,524. Um, this is an increase compared to 2021. Our expenditures, um, are our total $2,357,964 compared to our budget of $2,643,820, leaving us an annual surplus of $481,844. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Adeya. Uh, any questions from council? Clarifications? Anything longer than one?
All I want to say is, good job Accounting Department because no adjustments, that's pretty impressive after an audit.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's really nothing flagged there at all, so it looks pretty good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adeya. Okay. So, uh, next motion to approve the...
To approve the draft 2022 Village of Tassus Financial Statements and receive the audit finding. Second, Northcott.
Okay, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Fowler, Northcott.
Elliott.
Councillor Joseph?
Yeah, did I miss the motion?
Oh, yeah, it's to receive the... no, to approve the financial statements and audit finding.
Yeah, I heard that. You didn't hear me. Joseph, yes.
Okay, thank you. And I'm in favor. That's your name. Again, I don't see public input on here. This is normally where public input is, right?
And, yeah, you bet.
Okay, is there any public input? Okay. Hearing none, uh, motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
You can make it. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Fowler, Northcott.
Elliott.
Joseph, yes.
Woo!
Davis.
Thank you, everybody.
Wow.
Thank you, darling. Did that work?
It was, I think. Appreciate everyone attending. Know that...
Get dinner, please.
Thank you, councillor. Have a good night.
Okay, goodnight.
Great. Does anybody want these handouts that I brought home? This one's a really good one. It's from the UBCM advocacy days. It's the government... Anyway, I'll just leave them here in case anybody wants.